We'd like to welcome everyone to the upper area school board meeting. This is Mondays of September 12th, 2022, 6:00 PM. And we're meeting in the Susan Tully Livesley Boardroom of the 1887 building. Could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gayheart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Rovell's excuse, uh, Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow's excuse. Ms. Colton.
Yeah.
Ms. Williams.
Yeah.
Do we have a forum? And this notice has been meeting, has been noticed per state statute. Community participation. Do we have anyone in the audience that's here that's not part of something else that's coming up on the agenda that would like to speak? Okay, if, if not, then we can dispense with reading that statement. Do you have any, um?
I did not receive any ready communication for community participation.
All right, we're on to approval of the school board minutes. We have two separate sets of minutes, so we're going to handle them each. Well, I guess we can do it, um, we can do them together because we were all here, I guess. Our hall is.
Paul received the call.
Yeah, I received those.
All right, thank you. So, uh, does anyone have any comments or questions regarding either set of minutes? We have the closed session there. If we can entertain, if there is nothing, entertain motion for approval.
I move to approve the minutes of August 22nd, 2022, and August 31st, 2022, regular enclosed school board meetings as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, well. The motion is the minutes of the August 22nd, 2022, and August 31st, 2022, regular enclosed sessions, school board minutes as presented. Roll call, vote please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart. Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Um, oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Ms. Colton. And Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Okay, we're ready to go on to the next item. Let me go back here. Um, general and other fund bills. Mr. Truen.
The general and other fund bills this evening covers checks number 147094 through 147267. Wire transfers 185 through 188. ACH numbers 062 through 097. Option wires number 183 and 184. And voided checks number 146535 and 147025 in a combined amount of $585,093.76. And then there was a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills we reported.
Do we have any questions? All right, here is known, um, we can entertain a motion. I move to approve the general and other fund bills of September 12th, 2022. Check numbers 147094 to 147267. Wire numbers 185 to 188. ACH number 062 to 097. Options project wire numbers 183 to 184. And voided check numbers 146535 and 147025 in the combined amount of $585,093.76 as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the general and other fund bills of September 12th, 2022. Check numbers 147094 to 147267. Wire numbers 185 to 188. ACH numbers 062 to 097. Options project wire numbers 183 to 184. And voiding check numbers 146535 and 147025 in the combined amount of $585,093.76 as presented. Roll call, vote please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. Rovell's excuse, Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow's excuse, Ms. Colton.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'm not good at doing this. Okay, now we're on to the next item, which is a fund 46 transfer proposal. And I don't know if it's Mr. Truen.
Mr. Truen. The board may recall last year, we started a process of moving some of the community service charges that we do into our fund 46. Um, and that's really for the purpose of addressing eventual future maintenance needs really in our facility. So, last year, I think it was around $24,000. And this year, I think the number is 27,233.50. So, these are the fees that we charge for outside groups to use our facilities. We record it in fund, we record it in fund 80. And then we charge that back to fund 10 for use of those facilities. And this transfer, we put it in 46, which is set aside for capital improvements. So, it says they need those funds for eventual facility needs. So, it's just kind of building that balance. It's not a huge amount of funds, but over a few years, it would add up. So, we did this last September as well.
Does it matter that some of that is like supplies, like for the paper and whatever? Whatever, like, does that, I know you're the expert, so I'm just like, from what pod does that get most from?
Yeah, you know, that's in a separate line item.
I understand, yeah.
What we do basically then is just, we reimburse ourselves for the paper use and stuff.
Correct, okay.
So, that's not part of these monies.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question.
So, some of these, they'll look as though they're paid. So, what is going on with those? And maybe they are paid, maybe I'm just.
They just need to get paid on the sheet, I think. Yeah.
Okay, I just wondered. All right, any other questions or comments? Is it an action item, some of you clearly called it? I move to approve the fund 46 transfer proposal as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the fund 46 transfer proposal as presented. Roll call, vote please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Rovell's excuse, Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow's excuse, Ms. Colton.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Form. Now, next we have modification of transportation contract with Durham School Services.
Okay, this was the proposal that was discussed at the last board meeting in closed session because it's a contract item. And in meeting with Durham and having a desire to keep our wages competitive for our current employees and retain our employees as well. Um, it represents approximately a, just over a 5% additional increase on top of the 3%, which I believe it came out to was in a total of 8.11. 8.1% overall increase to our route fees. And then Durham's responsible on how they distribute that in the salary and compensation, but they assured us that that would go towards compensation for staff.
And then the 3% will be added onto the next year's contract. It won't, on top of the.
So, their, yeah, their current contract is a built-in 3% exonerated each year. So, it is 5.1% on top of the 3%. The next year.
It'll just be. Right, yeah, but it is cumulative, right? Okay.
And then that's up to Durham, how they allocate the compensation.
Any other questions or comments?
What's the bus monitor, the rate, the run to be negotiated?
We don't have one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just agree.
But we just put that on there to be negotiated.
If we need.
If we needed one.
Okay.
Yeah. We had bus aids, yeah, we had bus aids, but they're our aids.
Okay.
So, if we ever asked them to provide that, I think that was the intent, having that on the sheet.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? If we want to move forward, we could entertain a motion.
I move to approve the modified transportation contract with Durham School Services as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the modified transportation contract with the Durham School Services as presented. Roll call, vote please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Rovell's excuse, Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow's excuse, Ms. Colton.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I'd like to, I know we have a number of the drivers here and like to express our appreciation for being Durham who provides a service to us. And I, I know you have lots of options out there. Shortage, that's great. So, thank you so much. It makes a big difference.
The kids, the kids are worth it. Most of them. They're angels. They're kids. They're kids.
Well, they have personality, so.
But I did, I have to say, I talked to, um, a five-year-old who never seems to have a book to keep her hands busy so she doesn't rip her sister's hair out of her head. And so, now she'll sit in the first seat in a library, and a math is in the library, letting me have for three weeks a few picture books so that.
Oh, that's great. Something it's so.
So, it'll be better than caring to teach her.
Well, thank you very much.
So, yeah, look, the library to help.
Yeah, they are. All right, working on it. Next, we have report the discussion items. And the first item is student representative's report. For first, I'd like to introduce Abigail Colton and Emma Williams and maybe have them both speak about how they got here and a little bit about themselves. So, Abigail, we'll go alphabetically, we'll do Abigail.
Hi, I'm a junior at the high school, and I'm a student council rep. So, I'm vice president of student council this year. And I don't know what else. I mean, I play soccer and I do golf for the high school, so.
That's okay, that's fine.
Um, hi, everyone, I'm Emma. I'm a senior at the high school. I'm a rep for student council as well as just a class rep. Um, I play soccer, I'm really involved with whole song, I'm an officer there, so I really enjoy that. And, yeah, my hobbies. And then it's a fun try to just.
Go right on into your.
All right, so here, September 6th, 9th, here's, um, Westside, look at those adorable smiles. And then, I don't know what you, but I applaud the elementary school for not eating the marshmallows like I would have done.
They were building towers, so there's a tower competition. With very big marshmallows and each out here, it's made of.
I are Tibbetts Elementary School. Six smiles again. Jackson, so these are just some pictures from, I think it was Miss, uh, box class. And they're taking, or they're coloring. And then the rest are from student class in recess. The middle school, so I included our, our web team in there, even though this wasn't the week, but that's where they do like their sixth grade orientation. So, those are like the eighth graders who do like, um, just like helping the sixth graders. And then some other pictures just from the first week. In the high school, lots of pictures. Um, the left on the bleachers, I've seen your sunrise, don't be fooled. It was very foggy, I was very disappointed, I woke up at 5:00 AM to see no sunrise. It's okay, it was still fun. And then below that, we have our AP environmental field trip we took, um, Friday. We went to Maguano River, that was a lot of fun, me and Abby are in that. Of course, I had to include it. On top right, you see our boys soccer team, they are having a great season. And then the rest are just pictures from the first week, except for the one in blue, that's our freshman class, nice big class. That was them at orientation. And then options, there's a picture of our wonderful options teachers. And the party in the park is something that they did on Friday. I'm not sure with Abby. Um, so it was a way for like the students and the teachers to go and like meet their, um, to meet the staff. And they just had, they played around in the park and things like that. And then our career certified academy, they finished building their home, so the home took them two years to finish too. So, they finally got it done, and it's up in Whitewater.
And there's no sort of honey anymore. Yeah, it's just on the way to Caesar's, so it's nice to go down.
I would love to see it again.
And, yeah. I haven't gone to it, obviously.
The garage is actually on the left, so that.
Yeah, their pictures reversed.
Or it's a different house.
House number two. It's just reversed.
All right, that concludes today's statement. Thank you, that was fun, we always enjoy that. Okay, next is update regarding community requests to recognize Z Wilson and Paul Yankee. Do you have Mr. Truen's information on that?
Yeah, in a previous board meeting, um, Mr. Martel had requested that we look at and consider and have a discussion. I began, at the last Booster Club meeting, I felt that would be a good place to have a discussion. Something, um, the board can choose to do, whatever they would like. I don't have a formal proposal, this isn't a, um, formal proposal yet, but just the start, I wanted to let you know where we were. But the Booster Club felt that doing an honor or recognition for especially those coaches or individuals who had been inducted into their associations Hall of Fame would make a lot of sense and also create a scenario where it's expandable in the honor and the recognition. So, in working with that, I included and linked a document there. We have, uh, working with Chris Steppnitz and, um, Steppnitz Builders, he, he has a landscape architect friend. But we thought that the concept, again, this is just an initial idea, but the concept of having bronze plaques for those individuals such as Mr. Yankee and, um, Mr. Wilson, who were inducted in their association's Hall of Fame, having a pillar, a location where you can have that individual's image. And then, if you look at the, the plaques, and if I zoomed in, has kind of that history of those individuals. And so, we'd like to see something along this line incorporated into the entrance of the outside athletic area. And knowing that the field in that location is used for multiple sports and with multiple individuals. I know Joanne Schaefer, um, is the coach, has her name affiliated with the track. But that was kind of that initial feeling from just that group or that organization, but I haven't received. You know, that's kind of the concept, so just want to have a discussion around that, see what your thoughts were. And, uh, whether we should proceed in developing a formal proposal to bring back to the board for approval on this.
So, this would go along the sidewalk towards the building like this picture, or are you talking like where the?
Yeah, so let me, I can pull up.
Kind of just picture where, yeah, there's space to add on to.
Yeah, that was my concern, is like, how many?
Right.
Well, there's only, when we did our, I, I could be off by one, but I believe there's five Hall of Fame coaches in this school this year. It's quite, it's, so it's not, you could always expand and add another pillar, but it's not something that is, it's a very high level honor or recognition. Let me go ahead and just pull this up real quick, because this is going to be the easiest. So, the thought was, we'll have the landscape architect look at that, but incorporating some landscaping on a pillar right here where people come through the entrance and the home crowd passes. Um, that this area right here would make the most sense. Up over here, it's not really prominent.
Yeah.
But that's where we thought this location, that's where the landscape architect would look at.
I think it's kind of a nice idea that then they reach that credibility stage in their career. And then they get added, rather than groups keep coming forward and trying to decide and then putting it on certain people and depending on who's on the board. And then it's a very, what's the word?
Objective.
Objective way to do it.
Well, subjective for us, subjective for their.
Right, right.
Paul, any, any thoughts? I know you brought this forward for discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm really, um, quite, uh, pleased and impressed with, uh, the idea of those, those types of plaques and the pillar type of thing. And I, I would also suggest that maybe we go down to Burlington Dalton Stadium and look at that. I think for all the coaches who have, uh, met the, uh, Wisconsin recognition of coaching association awards, those are definitively, um, ones that we want to have, those brass, um, placards on there. But if you look at the Don Dalton Stadium as well, I think just to recognize anyone, and I don't know if their criteria is, their, uh, wall of, uh, I don't know, recognition, fame, whatever, for Don Dalton is any coach, and I don't know if it's 15 years' experience, 20 years' experience within the district. Then they have kind of like the, uh, like the sidewalk brick engraved, uh, built into that pillar or the wall. Might be something else to consider putting into the, the thing, because when people commit that much time into the, the community, into their activities, I think that some recognition, of course, not to the degree of a state Hall of Fame coach, uh, but also should be, be somewhat incorporated.
And it's nice, because now they get, again, it's criteria that's already set up, so I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I like that, Paul. Maybe if you, I can have John reach out to Burlington and see what that is, but we already have the favor area. So, it would be very easy for us to incorporate, especially the eight by eight favors and, and do that, those larger, that larger size and recognize which of those.
Right, and, and just so that they're a focal point, not scattered in, is I guess what I was thinking.
No, that makes sense, we could designate a section or an area, might find that pillar where we could have.
Or like at the base of pillars, you know.
Yeah. Um, the other thought was, and these are very pricey, but you're not talking about a whole lot of them.
Yeah.
And the other thought was, I know that the plaques for our Hall of Fame coaches that the association gives are also displayed inside. But our thought was, it'd be nice for those who are coaches for the outdoor events that were in that athletic lobby that when we order one bronze, that we do two. So that we can place one inside and then one outside. So, let's say that we had a Hall of Fame basketball coach, we could put the bronze plaque by the basketball gymnasium, but then also outside on the pillar so that spectators can have that awareness, whether they're fall sports or winter sports. And likewise, say it was a wrestling coach that could go by where they hold their wrestling, or swimming coach that they could have one inside, but yet would also honor adults.
Sure. And I think the way the community is, if it's crazy too, I mean, we could look at fundraiser for that. I think the community will support that because they've supported the coaches, they support the programs. So, I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Right, and I, I looked into that too, is the fundraising for it. I really believe that with the impact they've made in our community, fundraising will not be a problem. Um, but what I would like to add to the fundraising is, uh, any additional, um, funding that we receive would go to, uh, forward the foundation cast, like we need new lights at the stadium. That would benefit the soccer program, the track program, and other programs as well. So, additional funding, uh, that's received in any fundraising event that we, we take under our wing, I think we just, um, uh, make it known that any excess is going to go to fulfillment of the improvements that we already have, uh, uh, started at our, our facilities. Because I, I'm, I know that there's a lot of alumni and a lot of community who would be very, very generous.
Yeah, I, I think we saw with the memorial for Officer Fred Thatcher. That was, yeah, I agree, Paul, there'd be a lot of support.
But I, you know, I, I think if you, you look at, uh, some of the lighting, uh, issues that were right now, and knowing that we're trying to address that, I think people would also, uh, if they knew that was our focus is, to put any excess towards those types of things, I think that would also, uh, um, help the, the, the support.
Right, now, I think we need to focus on what will that cost?
Yeah.
And what would we need? But keep that in mind, but, you know, one step at a time, I think.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so, any other comments?
I'll, um, I'll put together the formal proposal, plan and idea, working with, um, Chris and the Booster Club, and then bring that back when that's finalized.
Sounds great.
All right.
Next, we have recommendations of the district administrative personnel.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. We have a handful of resignations, Cynthia Ravi, Christine Hurenich, and Wayne Targo. And, uh, want to thank them for their service as a special ed teaching assistant, avid tutor, and custodian respectively. We have the appointment of Sarah Cook as a special ed teaching assistant. Emma Gunderson is a middle school avid tutor. Anne Hauser is a option special education teaching assistant. And Randy Kurt for stepping out to serve as a middle school girls' basketball assistant coach.
Do we have a, um, like for hourly employees, like a requirement to give a certain notice before?
You can't prevent someone from quitting whatever they want to quit. You can put in like we have with our professional staff.
That's true.
That will. Uh, so likewise, we could dismiss them the next day they, they can quit. For our contracted staff, you can write in severance penalties. With that, it's, those can be difficult to enforce unless they're going to another district within the state of Wisconsin. Because then you can reach out to DPI and say that like, two A, they haven't paid their severance penalty.
Yeah.
They're under contract with us, you need to withhold their license. But then, that really only matters if that district cares that they have a license or not like that.
Oh.
Boy, meaning, I mean, I know a local district that they needed to hire an EL teacher, they knew the person was qualified. It was mid-year, they're like, well, fine, go ahead and withhold their license to the district A, if you want, we're still going to hire and work with them. And then at the next contract year, they'll have the license. So, there's only special ed teachers are the only teachers that there's really an impact if they don't have a license. Because if they don't have an active, unfiled license, we don't get special education. All the other positions, there's not really a specific consequence if they don't have an active license.
Yeah, it just was a little.
Yeah, there's not, we, we do see that in some of our, we, we've seen a lot more volatility with our special education teaching aid sports.
Do you have any questions or comments? I know, it's always disheartening, it's like, you'd love to see this, you know, resignations, but, you know, it, it's a different time than what it was 10 years ago, so.
Yeah.
Before. I guess I just hope that people have more decency than, I don't know, I guess they're old school anyway.
The unemployment rates low, they, there's lots of opportunities there. And then part of it too is because our, these positions are not year-round positions. So, they take your insurance, it becomes its pro rate that they take that. And so, some of them, even though that's explained, I think it's kind of sticker shock when they get in there and go like, oh, wait, my interest not nearly as.
Yeah.
What I thought.
So, a lot of reasons. So, would anyone like to make a motion regarding this? Ooh, that's stupid. Should we?
I'm going to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for September 12th, 2022, including new employment contracts contingent on passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for September 12th, 2022, including new employment contracts contingent on passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented, roll call, vote please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Phenomenal excuse, Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scare's excuse, Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Next, we have acceptance of school gifts, and that's Mr. Tedlock.
All right, we have a number of school gifts to present this evening, five in total. Certified powertrain employees donated school supplies valued at $41.50. Precision Plus has donated $4,250, supposed to cost three coach buses to the International Manufacturing Technology Show in Chicago. Palmer Hamilton has donated $1,000, supposed to cost two coach buses to the same show. TDS has donated, and Elmer, the Elper mascot.
That's amazing.
$4,869. And the Elcor Lions Club donated $300 for books for four key students, $500 for the environment fund and $500 for special education. And, um, yeah, I really have to give credit to John for reaching out to Word with TDS on the new mascot.
I want to see it. My brother-in-law wore the very first Elmer.
Yeah, is it, is it like the same costume we use for all these years? You guys, you guys had two on one time.
Very, very.
Oh, okay.
We still have the old one.
I, I'm sure. I want to see the other one. Muscles?
Oh, no, it's like he's the wearership that has the muscles.
So do we know who's going to wear the costume yet?
Oh, that's just obvious.
Oh, you don't know who did it? But I mean, has it been decided like?
Yeah, it's always always. There's no ready event.
Okay, cool. This, this. They're like a whole training for that.
There is, I think a training and a cleaning process.
Oh, now.
Sucker, I'd be a class.
I, I think, there's no way I could do that.
We have the one at Tibbetts and I included a spray cleaner with it as well.
It's during the tiger, yeah.
I said, don't need it that one years ago.
Um, yeah, so those lots of.
Yeah, it's over $11,000. I think I forgot to add one amount in there, went 300, so it's oh, well over $11,000, which is amazing. So to receive these, we need to have, um, a motion for this, to accept them?
I will to accept the gifts as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Just.
I've got a gift, Mr. Martel.
I know, sometimes doing a Zoom, you feel like there's delay in there. Probably because of the broadcasting. So we have a motion and a second to accept the gifts from Certified Powertrain, Precision Plus, um, Palmer Hamilton, TDS and the Elcor Lions Club. It's, it's amazing. So we need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I have a question regarding that. Do we do like thanking cards back to them or do something we?
We do a thank you letter and it also has the information that they need, so. If determine that they could use it as a text correction, if we stay, that's a part of their account.
Right, right.
Good question, yeah.
Good question. Now we have announcements.
All right, just some quick FYIs, Carthage College is, um, well, it's supposed to be, but they're exploring, uh, putting in an engineering program and the current family foundation who are large donors to Project Legally recommend they come and look at our K-12 engineer or Project Legally programs. So they'll be here tomorrow, a couple representatives there. The International Manufacturing Field Trip is Wednesday, 150-plus students plus some of our staff to chaperone. And myself already going down for that as well. And it's been the first one because of the pandemic since, I think, 2018.
Oh, wow.
Was the last time we had a chance to go. And, um, so big thanks to Precision Plus and Palmer Hamilton for helping facilitate that, make that happen. And then firstly, the school went well overall, the staff seemed very excited from the school year. And, um, I do have, I didn't put this tight, anyone's really interested, the Walworth County Retired Educators Association meets at Spurino's tomorrow at noon for lunch till 1:00. They asked me to do a presentation on redefining writing, they heard about that and what we're doing with that, so they asked if we could have present to them on that. It's a great group of former educators from all over the country.
What do they mean?
It, it's just at Spurino's, it's, um, and, uh.
The pizza pub?
Yeah.
No, the Monte Carlo's, it's for sale. It's, it's a pizza pub.
It's not in the Monte Carlo.
The pizza pub or the Sea Breeze Restaurant?
Yeah.
That's my original restaurant.
Restaurant, okay.
Yeah. That's the dining room.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to one of the, um, secretaries at the high school over the weekend and she said it was the very best start that she's ever seen at the high school for the first week. She's like, it was amazing. She's like, it was awesome. So I'm like, oh, that's really great to hear, so.
It's, yeah, nice, we, we have phenomenal staff, we have great kids and they have a lot of stability with the school leadership teams too, so.
That was really great to hear.
And they all know what they're doing. Yeah.
Great, that's really good. All right, if there's nothing else, we can take a motion, um, motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, second, we need roll call vote.
Uh, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scare is excused, as well as Mr. Phenomenal, Ms. Colton?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried.